District 3, Councilwoman Letham.
Present.
District 4, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District 5, Councilwoman Giles.
Here.
District 6, Councilwoman Shipley.
Here.
Marika Marrows.
Here.
We have a core Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. First, Council. Thank you all for attending this special meeting. It was asked for so we could give Council updates on COVID-19, our response, and for, I think the most important item is how we're reaching out to the business community and what we can do for them. I'm going to start with the internal, external, and then the next presentation will be Linda Adonetto, Economic Development Director. She'll talk about the business community. So, and I think we have a presentation or a slide. And thank you to all that are watching at home. We're doing our virtual council meeting, virtual special meeting, and we have staff lined up to do the presentations. But, and then who's got the switcher? So, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so, anyway, the, as you recall, about a week ago, we did a presentation on this, and we talked about Level 1, Level 2, Level 3. We are currently, we remain at Level 2, which is, oh, thank you, which is where we believe that it's local. We have not, we had two cases positive out of Payson, no cases in Globe, but there's still active test results have not been returned. It's taking between one and three days to get test results back, and we're having the county halls every meeting. So, just to go through the key, social separation, keeping the distance between people. What we've done, just to update Council internally, work from home when available. We have nine people that we currently have primarily working from home. Work with accommodations. We have six people who we've set up various scenarios to allow them to be separate or at least in limited access areas. A-team and B-team splits in departments, where we have one department, one person home, one in-house, a three-person department, one person home, and then the other two going back and forth. I'll tell you, it's tough to get laptop computers at this point. They're, not only are the chips made in China, but there's a run on that for working from home. But we're going with that A-team, B-team, trying to keep people with the same job description, the same knowledge base, separate. So if something happens to one side, the other side, Team A, Team B can take over. Respect for employees' health risk concerns. I do not believe it's appropriate for your employer to ask someone to function in a way that they feel unsafe, that they feel not, do not feel comfortable. And so we're listening to our employees and making sure that we hear them and what they need to do, so that they feel that when they come to work, they're not overtly putting their, themselves at risk. And that's a real important across the board, what we're doing. We started the customer service windows. They're open. That happened fairly quick here, was we, we started kicking this idea around Monday afternoon, and I think by, is it Tuesday at noon, or I think Wednesday at noon, we had them open. Ruben from Public Works got the counter set up, and so if you come to the door, he'll find, so City Hall is open. City Hall's courts and the water office are functioning. What we've done is close the lobby. We've locked that front door, but we're providing service Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, even lunches. And you walk up to the far window, which is the water office window, and information, and most people are water office. If there's an information question they have, or if it's courts or City Hall, we'll send them to the second window and call somebody up. We, someone forgot to remind, that we couldn't really get easy access from behind the counter to in that lobby unless you go around. And so we're starting everybody at the first, at the second window, the farthest window, and that's where Megan is usually the first one to appear there. And so that's working out really good. Gives them a comfort level. We have human contact, and we're taking money. We have a bell. We got a pen. We got a rope on the pen, because everybody's walking off the pen, but that's okay. So it's, it's been pretty good. I think, you know, with the lobby closed, but humans, humans able to help residents, I think it's really important that the City Hall remain open, remain functioning. This is the center, the heart of your, of the people's government, and they need to see that we're there for them. So we're also doing meetings through a product called Microsoft Teams. It's like Zoom, but it's, we already have that. We already owned it with our 365 office. And so we, we're doing mini-meetings and just checking in. When people are working from home, they kind of feel a little bit out of the loop, so we try to, as many times as we can, get on, do the video chat, make sure we're keep communicating, everybody knows what's going on, and that way everybody stays in the loop as to what's going on. Outdoor meetings. A lot of times, if we do need to meet, we'll go out to the, to one of the picnic tables and, and hose it, you know, make sure we're all clean and sanitized, and then have our meeting outside. I think it's just, it's fresher. It's just, I think, less chance of anything, the separations there. Reassignment of nonessential duties. One of the things that we are doing is the museum, Bechegawa, is not open, because it's a, basically it's a tourist attraction. The park is open, but the museum is closed. The, Leanna's going to stay working out there and doing things, so she does other things with keeping the premises safe. The two people who were assigned there are going to be reassigned to help out at the police department, which is an essential service. And then we're looking at library and how we, we separate that out to make sure that, that we have our people utilized in the most effective manner. Deferrment of all nonessential spending in anticipation of Q4 revenue decline and the uncertainty. Obviously, we're, the, our city sales tax is going to decline because of this event. We are looking at operational spending, and anything that's nonessential, anything we can either not do or postpone to the next budget cycle, we're going to do that. I don't believe we're, you know, we're nine months into our spending. We're not going to turn the ship on the spending. The spending will be, will be what it was, will decline some, but I believe the revenue will dip more. Jeannie is going to come back with a presentation kind of in more detail about projections. We, I've been talking to a lot of different people about how we manage this, and so we'll have it more detailed. This is not the time or place, but I will let you know that we are, we're very aware that we're going to see immediate decline in sales tax revenue. And so we're, we're doing what we can to defer, but there are things we need to spend money on. There are things that we need to buy. There are things that, that we need to provide services that we didn't even plan on doing. So we're, we're going to do what we need to do and spend what we need to spend to make sure that we have what we need. Now, there are programs out there for reimbursement for costs directly related to us responding to the, you know, the COVID-19. And so some of these costs will be taken up. Overtime cost is a big one. That's one we can submit and get reimbursed, we believe. We're just seeing the paperwork coming in. We're tracking all our additional spending because of this event, and we'll, we'll have to, you know, calculate that in, so we will get some reimbursement through federal funds. Jeannie is going to have a much more complete presentation on how we're doing that. My message to you today is, we're aware, we're taking action, and we're planning for what we know is inevitable on the, on the spending side. Now, this is, if needed, this is Level 3. I just want to remind, if something happened, and this would be a positive infection within the city government, has not happened, hope it doesn't happen. All right? We would seek guidance from the county health officials. Department closures based on location. Where was that person? Who were they in contact with? The less that people interact, this is so counterintuitive. The less that people interact with other employees, the better chance we have that if someone does get sick, that the people who had contact would, would have to self-isolate or self, do that self-quarantine. And then we, depending on the building, we would probably have to close that. Telephonic supervision, there are scenarios where people don't even have to go into Public Works Building. They can, they have, they come, pick up their truck, and do their jobs, and, and end of the day. Reduction to core services as required. In a, in a really bad scenario, we would, there are some things we just have to jettison and not do if we, we lost certain people. But this is not, this is only if needed, but I share with you, we're, you know, planning and thinking ahead and, you know, hoping this doesn't happen, but we're, you know, planning is the most important part of it. Okay. External response, Level 2, external response. And I look at this, because my eyes are better. So as you know, Active Adult Library and Museum are closed, but Meals and Wheels, which is, all the cooking that's going on Meals and Wheels out of the Active Adult Center, they're delivering, they're delivering meals, continue to deliver meals. Actually, our driver, that's all he does. He doesn't go into the building. He collects the meals, and he goes and he delivers the meals. And that way, if something would happen inside the Active Adult Center, we'd have to close that down, but we still have a driver that can get meals from somewhere else. They're still doing drive-by meals, where people can pull in between 11 and 12 and pick up meals for seniors. And libraries, libraries doing student meals is functioning. So I was down there today, and they have, they have cones. You come in off of Sycamore, drive through the dirt, and you know, they line up, and you pull up to the, the front door, and one of the library workers with a mask figures out how many kids are in there, and they, they pass out these meals that they pick up from. These are USDA paid for. And they, they served, they have normally 110 this week. Today, they had enough. Yesterday, I think they were short like eight. They're upping the order to 125. And, and these are parents with school-aged children that are getting their kids in the car and driving them to get the meals. And that's really good that we're up, we start at 70, we're going to be up to 125 by, by So City Hall, Courts, and Water Office, continued operation, normal hours. Like I say, we're not closing down City Hall. We're limiting the lobby access, but we're not closing down the functions. No water, no water turn-offs for non-payment. At this point, I think it would be not the time to, to, somebody can't make that payment, not time to say, well, we're going to, you know, we're going to shut down the water to your house. What we are looking for and recommend, what we need is a water hardship agreement, addressing deferrals, fee waivers, and terms. We'll work with those people. If they're having trouble, we need to come in and, and talk to us. But, so we, just so you know that, that that's something we're looking at, and this is both business and, commercial and residential. So city response to the executive order. This is a topic, you could talk for an hour. I'm going to, I'm going to try to shorten it. It's, it's important. This is Governor Ducey's stay-at-home order that came out, and there are, there are four types of essentials. There are essential functions, healthcare, utilities, government. There are essential businesses. Restaurants that are serving curbside and takeout and drive-through are essential businesses. Businesses that support the city of Globe are essential. We're essential, so, so our vendors are essential. Essential activities. If you're a person that's being asked to stay home, but you can go out to do essential activities, food shopping. You can go to the grocery store. You can go and do certain things, and there's a list in the executive order 202018. I won't go through all of these, but you have to, if you read these documents, you got to look for these different categories, essential activities. And then essential employment. If you're employed by essential business, then your employment is essential. If you're employed by someone who provides essential functions, then your employment is essential. And, and so you need to realize that, and so that, so it gets complicated, but the, you have to have, the essential business has to be open, and those essential employees need to be at that business. And so they're, they're given that blessing to get out there and travel and be out. One of the things, this is, the interpretation on this is a, is tough. In the rule, it does talk about that you do not have to document or define or defend how, you know, how, that you have the right to be somewhere. If you say, I work, you know, I work for City of Globe, or I work for, you know, Copper Hen, I can, I can get to that business without having to defend why I'm out and about. That is not part of the enforcement. We're not trying to figure out who's on the road and why. I think across the state, no one is trying to figure out, you know, where are you going and why are you going there? There, none of that, I think is going on. Nonessential businesses may operate if, and this is probably the toughest one. Those businesses that are not listed as essential, they can still function. A lot of them have a core service, and they have people working from home, or they're a mail order, or they're doing online. The key definite, the goal of limiting nonessential businesses is that you keep that six-foot separation. You're not doing transactions. You're not trading goods or money or having people in the same building with you. So to define it down, nonessential, you may operate if no in-person or onsite public interactions. If you had a nonessential store, you couldn't let people into your store. No in-person or onsite customer transactions. If you're trying to sell something, you, if you're nonessential, you shouldn't be trading money. You shouldn't be getting money, you shouldn't be getting within people and having that transaction, because that transaction is an action that could transmit a virus. No in-person or onsite employees. If you're the owner and you go down there and you're doing what you need to do, that's good. But you can't bring your employees. They can work from home. They can work separated in another building, but this is the, how they're defining this. Now, Mayor, you know, and you've been on a lot of these phone calls too with, and it's hard to get good, clear explanations of, of these, but we, I did add another slide, so I'll, I'll save that for, for the explanations. Progressive enforcement. Inform and educate is the motto. This is what everybody's going with. I talked to, what, what I think that the city's concerned on enforcement is gatherings and nonessential businesses. All right? I think if people are having conversations, if we see something that, that is something that, that looks like it fits in this category, we're going to go have a conversation with them probably at a economic development level. You know, have that conversation and say, and help walk through the process. If that, if we still feel that there's a risk there, and we will probably have someone higher up in code enforcement or something like that. If it's flagrant, if it's something that we really think is problematic and to the, not good for the, for the city, then we will probably have somebody higher up go over there. But we haven't gotten there yet. I think everybody wants to comply. I don't see anybody wanting to defy this. Everybody's trying to figure out how to comply, just figuring out how to comply because so many questions. We're in that stage. And so I will say that this is the, the discussions with the Health Department is, is what progressive enforcement, I don't think we'll ever get to that third where we have to send police over there. Stage four would be, we do have, there is a citation that is out there that, for noncompliance with a state law. I don't see us getting to that point. I think that gatherings though, are, if we see a group of 50, I think it's, it's our duty to say, you know, this is, this is not good. You know, you got, I think even gatherings of 10. And so we're trying to get clarity on the 50 and 10, but, I mean, that is the goal, to stop the virus, stop the spread, six-foot separation, no gatherings larger than 10. And so we're, we're looking at that. I only have two bullets on here because this is very preliminary in what we know and what we've heard. So this is about as much as I can say about that. It's a little evolve, I think. So this was on the, came from the governor's office. If asked, am I an essential business? This is what the governor recommends that cities, elected official and, and staff do. Refer to the question to executive order 2012 on the essential services. I think everybody should be told, you want to figure out where you're at? Take a look at this. It's, it's a big document. Take a look, find yourself, figure out where you fit in, and read it. Let that person, who knows their business more than that person who is running the business, they know what they do, they know who they serve, and, and let them dig into that. If, if at that point, ask them, where do you think you fit in? What is your interpretation? Because this is important that, that you look at this and you, you apply yourself to this. The governor's office said, still questions, refer to section 14 of the, the executive order 2020, which talks about the, the goal. What is, what is the, the goal of this whole process? Social separation, distancing between six feet, and, and taking those risks for essential service, but not taking those risks. So, so that is what we're, we're, we're trying to decide. It is, it is a process. There really is no, there is no website that you can go to and say, I'm essential, I'm not. It's, it's, it's fit to the, to the, the person and what's going on. I think there's some clear-cut interpretations that, of certain things, but in that gray area, I, I think we need to work with anybody who asks and, and get them to help explain and come to where they believe it's at. Again, this is very early. This happens soon, and we're still trying to get more detailed explanations, but this is, this is about the, the closest I can get to explaining this to council and how we're going to approach that. And that's what I have for you, Mayor.
We'll open it up to any comments or questions for council, Shirley.
I, I have a comment. So this is the mask that my friend Libby Rooney made me. It is two, and it has all these filters in the middle, and we are wearing these when we go out in public, or if you're at the Fry's or the Safeway at the Walmart or what have you. Today, I had to go to Walmart to pick up some prescriptions for a friend of mine that is doing chemo, and she can't risk being exposed. So I wasn't real keen on, when I pulled into Walmart and saw probably 80 cars there, I wasn't real keen on going in, but, so I got my mask out. And I mean, these are pretty slick. They just fit right out, and they've got metal, a metal, so you can, well, it, it really is quite sealed. And with four layer, you have two layers of fabric, and then those four layers of that interfacing, it, it really is quite thick, and, and I really do think it, I don't think the droplets could get through. So that said, I know of seven people that are making these masks in our community. There are some that are just making them for the hospitals and for the, you know, Heritage and Haven and, and the doctors, but there are some that are making them for us, the members of the public. And all of these folks can be reached on Facebook. They're all on Facebook. You can go, you can reach out to them through Facebook Messenger. Holly Brantley, Bunny Kessler, Dottie Sanchez, Libby Rooney, Leanne Powers, Karen Donaldson, and Lisa Tarango. All of them are on Facebook. Again, you can reach them through Facebook Messenger, and it's, it's really peace of mind. I had a lady tell me today, you know, I wear a mask not because I'm sick, or I, I sometimes people look at me and think, oh, she must have it, she must be sick. She has an 87-year-old mother that she grocery shops for, that she doesn't want to bring the virus to her. So she wears her masks and her gloves when she goes to the store to, to protect the person she's shopping for. So at any rate, let me just list those names again real quickly, and they can all be reached on, reached through Facebook. It's Holly Brantley, Bunny Kessler, Dottie Sanchez, Libby Rooney, Leanne Powers, Karen Donaldson, and Lisa Tarango. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Any else have questions or comments, Freddie?
Yeah, so back to your presentation. I have a couple things.
Sure. Sorry, back to your presentation. I have a few questions. Are we supplying our staff any PPE for the people that are manning the windows? Gloves, sanitizers?
They have, they have sanitizers, they have wipes, soap and water, of course. There are, my understanding is there are some masks that fire brought over if they feel that they, they need to, to put those on. And I do believe, I can't, don't quote me on this. Are there gloves out there? I don't know.
I didn't see them.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I haven't seen them wearing gloves, but I have, I have seen library staff, well, library staff delivering the, the meals, gloves and masks when they're dealing with people, so.
Yeah, I just think it's important that we furnish those supplies to them because they are working directly with person-to-person contact.
And?
And I'm talking the nitrile kind of gloves, rubbery kind of?
They were, they were blue.
Okay.
I didn't get, I was like 20 feet away, so I didn't see what.
Okay.
And Councilman Reels, just to follow up, at the last staff meeting, I asked everyone, it's like, is there anything else we can do to make you feel more comfortable? Or do you need anything at the, in your work area, in your department? And so the question is, I'm always open to anybody who needs something. I do know that, you know, police and fire, I won't speak for them, they're, they're rounding up their own PP&amp;E, that's something they have. I know that Dale was getting some, was out and about some of his connections, trying to get them. I know that Gary has some, and we're all trying to get more up here. But it, on regular, non-public safety staff, we're providing them as, as requested.
Okay. Another, Mayor, if I could, I have a couple more. When we talk about not turning people off for nonpay and extending payments and things like that, they understand that the, the amount dues are still going to be, they'll still be responsible for those amounts.
The amount, the, the, the bill, the water usage is going to be something that they're going to be responsible at the end of the day, yes.
Right. And this all goes into, you know, we're, we're going to have a dramatic decrease in, in tax revenues, but we still have to spend, and that's where I'm going with this. You know, we, we still have to provide the quality water. We still have to provide the, the quality service and the trash and everything like that. So, you know, it's something that I think this council, we should really consider, not just today, but down the road when, when we start budgeting and we start thinking that maybe we can spend a little more for something that, that really is, should be thought out deeply so that, you know, we're not getting into that general fund deeply so that we have this rainy day fund. And obviously, this is not a rainy day. This is somewhat of a gloomy time, but it's still something that we have to provide as a service, and we have to really be the good stewards of our, of our general fund and, so that we can continue to provide these services. So, you know, let's, let's think about that down the road when we get to that position. You know, grow the pie and not, not keep minding and shipping away at it, so, just to.
And Councilman Reels, just what I'm thinking about, I don't know if I said this initially, we believe that we can make it to June 30th by, we, there's not much we can limit on operational expenses that, that die as set, but there's still a lot of CIP that we can defer, and then we will use that CIP to backfill the operational, and that'll keep us out of the rainy day fund getting from here to, to June. Our hope is that we have enough CIP that we can defer and put the brakes on, and this is in general fund, CIP, not enterprise, that we can, we cannot have to, at the end of the year, go into fund balance and go into, you know, that money. We'll need that for, for other things, but our goal is to defer enough CIP spending that we can backfill operational spending and not touch the, the fund balance.
Good. Well, I'm glad you're looking ahead like that. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. Anybody else have questions or comments?
Paul, I got a couple of questions for you. Does, you talked about our sales tax. We know that's going to be going down. Our state shared revenues, that doesn't affect any of that, does it?
There's, so, HRF and, HRF will, is gas tax, and, and there's portions of gas tax. It's income taxes on a leg, on a lag, on state shared. The, the TPT that is distributed, that is more current. So we're going to see it stretched out over two, over two years, and so portions of our state shared will, will go, will go down. Portions will be fresh and because they're lagging from last year, and so we may see them dip in the next year. So that's good that we don't have a total hit in one year. It will be spread over two years. And, and those are some, we were on a phone call today talking about that and getting some details on that. That'll be something that Genie will go into much more detail as to which funds will dip when, because it's a timing issue. So, but, and, and right now, I mean, now is where you have to just go, we don't know where it's going to, you know, until we start seeing the climb back out, we don't know how far the dip is going to be. We don't see a V, a V-dip or a U-dip, meaning that it goes straight down, comes back up, it goes down, stays flat, and comes back up, you know, and that's the, that's the $64 question. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge doing budget cycle during that. What we will likely do in the budget is have, we, we don't want to do such an austere budget that if it does come back up in July and, and things start rolling again, that we're, we've strapped ourselves in. So we'll probably have a budget that's a two-tier budget based on performance metrics. We have core spending that we will budget for in worst-case scenario, but additional items that we'll budget for if we hit performance marks on our revenue projections. And so the, and, or, and, and that'll probably kick in in January. So, so we're going to have a, a two-tier budget, you know, and we won't spend the second half until we know that the revenues are showing up, and Genie will go into that. But we have to be, we have to be careful about that, and we have to plan, because that budget is a year projection into the future, and projecting three months right now, projecting one month, I wouldn't chance.
And we're still waiting on an explanation for stabilization, stabilization funds that are coming through the federal government, through the counties, and, but we still don't know exactly what that's going to be.
We're getting more and more information on it. I don't want to quote, I've seen, I've heard some stuff and seen some stuff. We're getting, we're documenting everything for stabilization. We're trying to set up a meeting with, it'll go through the county, and we're trying to set up a meeting for that. It's in the process. That's a good thing. I, I wouldn't be able to tell you much more as to what that will impact, other than we're, we're tracking everything. And so we don't know what will qualify, what won't, so we're tracking everything, and whatever we qualify, we should have the records to show that, that we expended that.
And another topic that we expressed our concern in rural communities this morning with the governor's office is supplies, N95 masks, and not only in our fire and police departments, but in our hospital, you know, we only have short supply. I was really surprised to learn that, like the hospital, they need those sterile gloves for exam gloves, and they get them out of Malaysia, and Malaysia's 50% production shut down. So their, their allocation is like 25% down. So they're getting, they're getting to a critical point too. So they're not looking at rural communities because we have the lower numbers, but, you know, we really need to be thought of, and hopefully we, a lot of the rural mayors are really pushing to get at least some supplies for us, because if anything is critical for us, we get a case.
Right. I did hear from Dale today. He, he went by and got a box of 50 from City of Chandler of N95 masks, so.
Very good.
So he can, you know, he's like the radar of law enforcement, or at least of the, the cop side.
And then just one last comment. I'm really impressed with our Gila County Health Department and our county on those daily briefings. They really keep us informed and break it down for us, you know, give us the information. I think some other counties are not getting that. That's what I'm, and there's a concern of that, but I think that they're doing an amazing job to, to keep us informed every day, and, and you know, we're, we're able to call into or listen in. And I, I think they have been doing a good job.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Michael Driscoll and Josh, he's their, their guru on, on infectious diseases. They're on that call pretty much seven days a week now. There is, I think, last I saw, 118 people, that email goes out to, that are able to log on, and I, I believe there's probably a good portion of those people on there. And if they text Michael as much as I text him with questions through the day, and he's always quick to respond, and, and so, no, they're, they're on top of this, and they're, they're on phone call after phone call too, with all their counterparts at the state and with other counties, and they still find time to respond to our needs, and so they've been out there and taking good care of us. We're really impressed. I agree.
Any other questions?
And, Mr. Mayor, before we end, the, I have a, the, and this person is not using their, their name, they're going after a surname, so I'm, I'm, I don't think we've had this, had this yet. You know, we have the email, we're council@so-and-so, it's council@globaz.gov. And so I, I think, Danny, I would make the decision that, that as you would have called the public, we need to know who's speaking to us. And so I have a handle that is, and I'm not going to say the handle, but it's got the word anonymous in it. I would recommend if anybody wants me, wants us to respond to these questions, and I'm sorry, I didn't think of this beforehand, that they need to put first and last name. I don't need to know where you're from, but we need to, we need to have that person giving their name so we can, we can tie that. So I'm going to try to see if I can surmise this, or... Yeah, and I'm going to pass on this one. And if, if that person wants to, to use their full name, I'll, I think, I think the core is, basically, he's saying, take a hard stand to, you know, to, for the protection, better safe than sorry. I think those are safe, safe words to do. So I think he's pro that we, you know, we take these actions. I think he's supportive of the actions the state are taking. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Item B, Economic Development Director Linda Aldaneta will update council regarding options available for local businesses during the COVID-19 pandemic, including information regarding the Small Business Administration Disaster Loan Assistance Program.
We're getting used to the sound now. This is what we see at Microsoft, the Microsoft Teams application. Hello, Linda? Can you hear us?
I can.
So Mayor has read the agenda item. Do you want to give your, your update?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes. We got a little- You might want to turn off the, if you turn off the feed from YouTube that's lagging.
It just did.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Danny, how do I share my screen again?
There's the little bar in the middle, it should say share. You hover over it and there's-
Great. Thank you. Hey, can you still hear me?
We, we still see you.
Can you, can you see this screen? Okay, great. There was a, okay, it's saying that there's-
There it is.
There it is.
Now we can see it.
Okay, great. I, first of all, I wanted to, to thank staff for, for really jumping in and being an extended part of, of my department. In the last few days, we have formed a task force that, on the city side, includes Adrienne, Ricky from the library, Leanna McGill from, from Bech, and Michelle Jorkovich has been a very much a key part, and Melissa Steele, as of today, is back online. And so, having these additional hands has really been wonderful for us to assist our business community, because right now, we, we need to be that resource, that, that dock connector, assisting our businesses to get them the resources that they need to keep their workforce in place and to, to get through these times. What you see in front of you is a summary of, of most of the programs that are available right now, and things, like I had mentioned last week, are fluid and changing every day. Tomorrow, tomorrow morning, there is a new product coming online. It's the Paycheck Protection Program, and I will get into that in a moment. And we worked directly with our, our SBDC at PAC, and the director is Kevin Peck. And so, we, we sifted through the plethora of information to create this for the businesses in the Globe Miami area. Right here, you want to see? I'm sorry, Paul, I thought you were interrupting. Okay, so here you can see that this, this is the Emergency Injury Disaster Loans Program through the SBA. And this is what everyone is the most familiar with, because this is the very first product that came online. And from the very beginning, we've been encouraging our businesses to just start the process. And we worked with Scott Critt from Mois's Printing last week. He completed the application over the weekend, and he called me and said, it was, thank you for the information you gave us. It was extremely helpful. It made his process very quick. And in fact, he was willing to sit and do a video for us that we posted on Facebook. And he's had at least two dozen businesses that have reached out with him to find out about his experience. And to our knowledge, there are almost 40 local businesses that have applied for, for this program. And the, the key point here is that this puts, at, at the minimum, $10,000 into our, our business owners' hands to, to cover payroll and fixed expenses. And this is a forgivable loan. And if a business would like to request more than the $10,000, the interest rate for that is 3.75%. And this is also applicable for nonprofits, as is the $10,000 upfront grant. And if nonprofit will receive a two, except five interest rate. Now, repayments on the loans, the part that is, that is not forgivable, we are hearing that there is a minimum deferment of six months, and most likely, it will be one year deferment of both principal and interest. Now, the term for these, these loans are, there's two, there's 15-year and 30-year loans that are available. And of course, there's no prepayment penalties. There's also no cost to apply for loans. And as soon as, and I should mention that the SBA would fight this backup and wreck. It had crashed last week, and over the weekend, it was rebuilt and is backed up to, to really fast speeds. So, a business owner can complete their application, if they have all of their financial information, past tax returns, profit, current profit and loss statements, they can complete the application within two hours. As soon as that is e-filed, within three to five business days, that business owner will be contacted by a case manager from the SBA. And that case manager will, will go through their, their application. At the time of application, a business owner does not need to state the amount of funding that they are requesting. That is something the case manager will go over them with, and to look at every, every program that the SBA has, currently has to offer, to, to best package the, the available resources for that, that business owner. Let's see. Basic forms that the business owners should have before moving into this process. Get on the SBA website, there's a one-page loan application. And you don't have to have your, your tax returns on hand to, to upload. If you give permission to the SBA to access your tax returns, they, they can do that directly with the IRN. And then the personal financial statement, it's another form on the SBA website that's, that's very simple to do. You have a current P&L statement, profit and loss statement, that, that is extremely easy to do, and a schedule of liabilities. And again, it's another SBA form that, that is available on the website. Let me go over the website one more time, it's sba.gov, and it takes me to their homepage. And right now, everything is all about coronavirus relief, so it's extremely easy to navigate, it's very intuitive, and we encourage our, our business community to just beat them up process. And then a case manager will help you navigate through, through all of the different resources that are available, too. Another great source is the, the Treasury page, home.treasury.gov. If you, you should see that on the screen, systems for small businesses. You write to that. Now, this is the other product through the Care Stimulus Package. This is the Paycheck Protection Program. And this program goes live as of tomorrow. And a business owner can receive funds to pay up to eight weeks of payroll, payroll cost, including benefits. These funds can also pay your interest on mortgages, your rent, and your refills. If, if these loans are used fully for payroll costs, all of the, all of the funding will be forgiven. But if you use it for, for other things, such as those other fixed expenses, at least 75% of the forgiven amount must have been used for payroll. Now, if an, if a employer has already laid off employees, they can still apply for this funding, and they can rehire their employee. Even if their employees have already filed for unemployment, they can rehire them and, and keep them at their, their past payroll level. And if they do so for the next two months, then that amount is, is fully forgiven. This, this funding is available to nonprofit, veteran organizations, tribal concerns, self-employed individuals, sole proprietors. I think it's very important for the self-employed to, to realize that this is the best program for themselves, because not every self-employed business owner pays themselves. And so, this is a way for them to bring in some revenue for them, so they can pay their, their personal bill and keep their businesses viable, so that when our situation comes to an end, then they can open their door back for business. So, as I said, starting tomorrow, all businesses and, and sole proprietors can apply. And all of our local banks are now partners in this program. It used to be, there were probably about 50 banks in Arizona that, that the SBA had approved for this type of a program. And right now, Wells Fargo, Washington Federal, and Great Western are all on board for the program. And they, they can either walk you through the process over the phone, or you can get online with them and, over the phone, and they'll help you to apply in that way, or you can apply by yourself online. And I should mention that the task force that we formed, which includes our city team, also includes the town of Miami, Hila County, the Chamber of Commerce, our Southern Hila County EDP, and the managers of all of our local banks. So, we, we're all working together to get the information to our business owners. And with, with the banks, things are still, still moving, still a little fluid. So, we will be meeting with each of the bank managers on Monday, when, when things have, have settled down for them, and their, their requirements are, are more firm, so that we can get that better information out for our business owners. So, the business owners, they can apply for, through any of these lenders, if they have other loan, other SBA loans that they have taken out, or have several businesses in the community that do have SBA loan, they can convert higher loans into this, this program, and they, they, one, they'll get a better interest for these. And they can defer principal and interest payments for up to a year. So, this is really a, it's a win-win for the business. We're encouraging them to take care, take advantage of it. This is another resource that we're sharing with our, our businesses. This is a great visual, very easy to, to navigate. This is the Small Business Guide Checklist. We have a lot of our businesses that have sole proprietors. Am I eligible? And the answer is yes. So, if you have fewer than 500 employees, this program, which is 99.9% of the businesses in the Globe Miami community, they are eligible for this. Interesting, it's sole proprietors, independent contractors, that's, that's a, a mechanism that so many of our, our local businesses use. They, they can't, their, their employees are independent contractors, and so they are, they are able to cover their, their fees, that they can keep them employed and so employees don't scatter to the wind, and then they can't, when, we can go back to doing business as usual, both employees come back and their jobs are secured. Here's some information on what lenders are going to be looking for. Basic financial statement, verification on, on your, your mortgage, your lease, and your utility payment, your, your payroll as of February 15th. So, that is what, what SBA is basing funding on. Where were you, what, what was your state of your business as of February 15th? We are repeating a lot of questions on this. How much can I borrow? So, all of your payroll costs, minus some of excluded payroll costs, that's what the businesses eligible to apply for. And this is a formula that we're going over with each of our, our business owners. Will this loan be forgiven? Because there's a lot of confusing information out there. Is it a grant? The loan? It technically is a loan, but if the funding is used under the approved parameters, which is payroll and fixed expenses, up to two months of that, if 75% of that funding was used for payroll, will be forgiven. Local First Arizona has been a great part for us. We, we share this with each of our businesses that are wanting to begin the process, and this is, where do I start? So, this is a, this, we give them, we give them a, a loan application, the tax information that they need to have on hand, their financial statements, and liabilities. We're trying to make this as easy as possible, so that when they, when the business owner sits down to apply, it goes as quickly as possible for them. This is, this is another narrative that we are sharing with our business owners, is again, is this a loan, is this a grant? So, if, if a business keeps their current workforce in place 100% in over the course of two months, it will be, the amount that they request will be forgiven. There is, there's talk that if a business is able to retain 100% of their, their current workforce for up to a year, that that amount to, to keep them in place for the year will be forgiven. And that, that information should be rolling out in the next few days. This, this is, again, the ones we're calling the hack sheet that we've developed with PAC. With, with everything that we're putting out, giving my, my contact information, call me, text me, email me, Facebook message me at any time. I've probably answered a couple hundred emails, and calls, and texts over the last three or four days. Kevin Peck is the director for EDC, Small Business Development Center, which we do have an office here in Oak, but right now, like everyone else, they're locked up. So, with, he's doing it very percolating. So, but he, he's very responsive with his phone, and just calls and breaks information. And his phone number, 928-428-590. And there's, we just received a grant from, from Southern Arizona, and I believe this is to help them be able to have their office open up for seven days, if they're subject to and, to be resources and help through the navigation of this, this process. There's definitely that need for all of the... So, we, we are working with, with our task force to, to create a hard packet, because a lot of people want to see this information, they want to feel it and look through it before they get online in this company. And we have these packets available at City Hall, the Chamber of Commerce, Miami County Hall, the Keith County Health Department, and the Hila County Courthouse. We are also making individual contact with every single business owner in the city of Gold, every business that has an active disliker. And we, we began that process today, and will be completed live tomorrow. So, we're trying to be the best partner that we can to our, to our business community. There, there are life threatening for our community. And right now, anything that we can do to, to help with them through this, this current time, that, that is our number one priority. that, that is our number one priority. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Linda. Freddie?
Thank you, Mayor. Linda, are these, are these businesses able to apply for more than one loan or one grant from individual entities like you've just explained?
Yes, they are. They, they're able to, to apply for the paycheck protection program and for the, the EIDL program. Of course, they thought double lift. And they, when, when they are talking to their case manager, they, they will have knowledge of what you are applying for, and they'll help best layer all of these available programs together. One thing that did come out in the last couple days, that they, if a small business owner owns more than one business, they can only apply for each program under one of those
Well, thank you. You know, I, I just want to thank you for, you know, shifting gears the way you have done and working with a business-oriented team to reach out to our businesses, because they are, you know, that, again, this is, I believe this is a fundamental responsibility of the city to help our business community in times like this. You know, they're sometimes taken for granted, and in hard times, I think we need to reach out to them, because they do, they do help move the wheels and, and keep things turning within the city in many ways, not just revenues. So thank you for all those efforts.
Absolutely. You're very welcome.
I just have a, I just have a comment. This is, this is all very well done, very, very well done. Thank you for, from all of our businesses.
Linda, I also have a comment. I want to thank you also, I'm sorry. Linda, I also have a comment. I want to thank you and your task force for taking the lead on this also. And like Freddie said, shifting gears. I know you're still doing economic development, but this is a priority right now to take care of our small businesses within our community. And, and really, the, the, really, the important part is the personal touch, to be calling each business and making sure they're okay, or, and maybe helping them through the process if they need it. So, so that's going to be important for here in the next week, couple of weeks that, that comes forward. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor. And it is, this is our priority. And to be honest, new projects are still happening. We, we just had a, a presentation regarding opportunity zones on Tuesday with, with a group that is moving two, two large projects here in the community. And utilizing the opportunity zone mechanism and, and some of these, these newly available relief programs, there, there is a way to, to layer them and to keep, keep things from stalling. Because that definitely was a fear when this first hit, that there was, there was some great momentum, good energy in the community, some major properties were moving. And with this hitting, we thought this was just going to be the death of some of those projects, and that isn't the case. This is, with some of these new programs, or with the disaster relief programs, could actually help move some of these other projects along and get it even faster.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, then Linda, you can't see this, but I do have one of the packets that Linda put together and are available on the counter. She's passing out, and it's got the information that you saw on the screen in it, and they're available at City Hall and, and other locations. But I just wanted to, I had one in my office, wanted to show you that. And, and Linda, thank you for, for pivoting and, and responding to this, you know, pulling the information together. It's changing every day. And I, I think you should remind her that while she will respond at any time, anyplace, you text her in, in Messenger, let's try to keep it between, you know, reasonable hours, nothing past eight o'clock.
Thank you.
I'm available after eight o'clock. You can.
Go to Item C, and the Code Enforcement Specialist, Michelle Yarkovich, will inform the public how to participate in the 2020 census entitled, "There's Still Time."
Michelle, can you hear us? Michelle, can you hear us? And you need to turn down the feed, the YouTube feed, or turn it off, so you can not be, there's a lag of about 18 seconds.
She has a nice smile.
Yeah. Hey, Michelle, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay. And did you turn down the, the YouTube sound?
I did.
Okay. Oh, there you are.
Am I there or not?
Well, the, the, the top of your head is there. So you need to, there, yeah, there you go. Much better.
Okay. Hi.
Yes, go, Michelle, go ahead with your discussion about how you can still participate in the census.
Okay. So I wanted to talk to everybody about the 2020 census. So we have over 53,000 people in Hela County, and 28% of those are 65 and older. We just wanted to continue to remind everybody to do the census. Sorry, I'm trying to see. So what's happening right now is you can go online to www.y2020census.gov, and that will take you straight to a website. It's really super easy to do. And it's self-managing, it kind of walks you through it. Right now, the self-response rate for Hela County is at 37.5%. Oh, sorry, 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 that's for Globe. The self-response rate for Globe is 37.5%. And last, last time they did it in 2020, the total number that we had was a little bit over 50%. So the self-response rate to be 37.5% right now is actually pretty good. We're excited about that. And we just need everybody to keep responding. So for Hela County total, it's a little bit under 30%. But for Globe specifically, we're at 37% for self-response. So I just wanted to encourage everybody at this time, if you haven't done it, to go ahead and go to www.y2020census.gov. And it's really easy to do online. If you have the mailer that came to you that has ID number, you can use that. And if you don't have the mailer, you can do it without the ID number. It sounds, there's weird feedback when I'm doing this. I'm not sure if you guys can hear me well.
Michelle, we can hear you fine. You're doing great.
Okay, okay. Does anybody have any questions about the census?
Charlene?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. For those of us that are not technologically inclined, it was very easy, it took, I don't know, not even several minutes at the most to fill that form out and, and put the, I don't even think I had to put a stamp on it. I think it was already prepaid. So it was very easy to do it by mail as well.
Okay, good.
Fernando?
I'd like to also add that some people think that they're only supposed to count their family members, but it's everybody that resides at your property. So if you have a guest house and somebody's staying at your guest house, they count. So you're, you're the one that's responsible to count them, because they're not going to get a separate mailer, because it's your address. So you just make sure you count everybody.
So right now, I have a niece that's living with my parents. And my parents counted my niece. My mom was really excited to count her. So that brings a lot more money to our community. So don't forget to add, count everybody. The undercounted areas are age, age groups are five and under. So people forget to count their newest members of their family. So any, don't forget to count your babies, and don't forget to count if you have any grandparents or anybody older living with you too. Because our senior citizens are undercounted and our children.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Michelle, the, also, we, you know, we had, we're going to have Census Day at the library, and we, we had computer systems there to, to help people. We still have a kiosk computer in City Hall in the lobby. I would tell anybody, if they're having trouble getting to a computer, if you want to come down the window and, and let them know, we can, we can sort it out to escort you in and let you use one at a time that computer to do your census, or call and make an appointment, and we will get, get you in there. And then we'll, we'll take the precautions before you sit down at the computer, and take the precautions after you sit down at the computer. But we still have that, that computer dedicated to that. So if, if someone's in a pinch and they just don't have a way to get online to do that, come down to City Hall, give City Hall a call, and, and we'll make the appropriate arrangement so that you can get online and, and fill out your census.
Paul, I'm glad you mentioned that, because a lot of census events have been postponed due to the current circumstances. So there was the Library Power Hour that was going to happen, there was an event at the Chamber that was going to happen. I was going to do sign-ups with my community cleanup. So some of those things have been postponed, I'll just say postponed, because I'm hoping that we pick them up later. But like, Adria still has Wi-Fi in her parking lot, so you can do the Wi-Fi in her parking lot and you. There's just a bunch of different resources. Like Charlene was mentioning that she's not technologically savvy, but everybody has a grandkid around, or a kid around, or a neighbor kid, or someone that can help you with the technology. And don't be afraid to ask them, because they'll be so excited to help you. And it's really an important thing to teach them about the census.
Michelle, Mayor, Members of Council, Michelle, Adria just texted me that, yes, they do have Wi-Fi in the parking lot of the, the library from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And so you can pull up there and get a connection with your phone or, or your laptop. And, and it's not limited. If you're, if you have a home computer and you do your family's census there, if you want to allow a neighbor to come in, it's not tied to your IP address. You can log on, have a unique ID, identify yourself. And so if you're a neighbor and you have neighbors that don't have that, that computer access or, or ability, you know, round up a 12-year-old and go over there, and they can get you on there, and you can fill out as many people from any same computer, it's not tied to an IP address.
Yeah, Paul, our communities get funding from the numbers on the census, so it's so important that we do it. Now more than ever, we really need those numbers to be high to get that funding. And so I think people have just, people talk it up, and just in conversation, if you have, with someone, ask them if they've done their census, if they're planning on doing it, or they need help doing it. And there's so many people that'd be willing to help someone do it, and it benefits our community. It's such an easy thing. It doesn't take very long, and it really is something that you can do for your community.
Well, it's, it's always, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, it's always a good conversation starter when you're in line at FISA or Safeway. It's like, hey, did you do your census? You know, it was easy for me, you know, of all that time waiting for certain paper products.
Yeah, people are getting annoyed with me asking them about it. But everybody's afraid, they don't want to tell me they haven't done it, so now they come up to me and say, I've done it, I've done it. So they don't want me to ask them anymore.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, and Michelle, thank you for the videos too.
Freddie, you got a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, Michelle, Michelle, before you leave, could you remind everybody what the absolute drop-dead date to file your census?
As of right now, if you don't do it by July 31st, you're done. It's, it's, you're not counted. And your next opportunity would be 10 years from now, in 2040, or yeah, 20, sorry, 2030. So it's July 31st.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, but Michelle, they'll, they'll do some outreach. As they get close to that date, they'll start reaching out and trying to contact and, and reach out to people. So, so there will be a secondary effort. But it's just really helpful if everybody just takes the time now while they're thinking about it, gets online or finds a paper and, and does this. And, and that way, you'll have satisfied your social, you know, commitment to support bringing our money back to Globe, so it can be spent on, on us. So.
Yeah, and if you go online and do it, the door-to-door census takers don't have to come to your house and ask you to participate. So it's so much, it boosts everybody if we just do it, a self-response on our own. And I would like to get those numbers up there, and I'd rather everybody do it sooner rather than later. I don't want everybody waiting until the last second to do it. It would be so much better if everybody just gets it done, and it's done.
And just, and Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, just a reminder, this information is very private, very safe, even whether you, you do it online, you do it by paper, or you speak to a representative of the census, is very segregated. This information is not shared with any other organizations, any other government organizations, is solely for the, for the census. And, and census is something that a 10-year count is mentioned in the US Constitution. So do it for Ben Franklin.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your participation in it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Item D, Public Works Director Jerry Barnes will present a list of potential roads that will be considered for fiscal year 2019, 2020 asphalt program.
Jerry, you there?
I'm here.
We, we can't see your smiling face yet.
There you are. There we go. How about now?
There we go. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I can tell by the, by the reaction of the crowd. Jerry, go ahead.
Okay, so Mayor, Council, my presentation's really short. I, does everybody have a copy of the list that I sent them on the chip seal and the ball codes and the asphalt?
Jerry, we can see it. It's on the screen.
Okay, I, I, just in case, I put it up there. So basically, I broke them out into districts, and there are two asphalt projects going. One is in District Two, which is down by Veschbogal. It's the area that's failed to drive off of Beer Tree Crossing. And the second area is District Five, which is, here is Hublot, which is from leases to bankers. That's, that's a building that we're deciding on whether to put a whole lay or mill at the end on that. But basically, this is how it broke out, going to be utilized into the entire budget for asphalt. The total, since it kind of says it all, we budgeted $400,000 for preventive maintenance of chip steel. We had an additional $299,000, $35,000 for asphalt, just included. And we utilized some of the money to go from the street repairs. So this year, our plan is to put out $760,416 worth of asphalt work. This will all be out of the half cent excise that is earned money and money that go from the budget of the street repairs.
Yay for asphalt!
Yeah, I, I, I'm really excited. We, we got, we got it spread out within the six districts. You know, if you can, if you can look back at District One, under the ball code, what's really a great thing about this is these roads are coming up on a six-year cycle, so we've been trying to follow up these every three years. Some of these are in the sixth year. So that means we're doing our job.
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry, in the past, my experience has been you've reached out to council members to see if they have a, a most favorite or a one, two, three item list. Is that what I'm seeing here, or are these items, are these streets? Is that what I'm seeing here, or are these items, are these streets that you are dedicated to doing?
We, for two things. One, I do not have inmates, so I do not have time to crack seal these roads. There is actually three roads that are still being cracked sealed up, it's good. And we're going to have to designate some times of that to get them done at that time. So basically, you're seeing, most of what you're seeing is roads I've already had prepped.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I've been given some choices here, but I don't have the manpower to do what I'm busy doing. My workforce is cut by two-thirds.
Any questions, comments?
I have a comment. So since you brought up your workforce being cut by two-thirds, I just want to tell you that the workforce that's left, I see them, I see them out there every day, all day. And lately, they've been at the dog park, and that is amazing, that is just an amazing facility. Everyone that is, every member of your team that's associated with that dog park needs to be really proud of themselves. I'm so impressed with, we have a cement, curved cement walking path perimeter formed with compacted crushed granite that's probably eight feet wide all the way around the perimeter. It's something you would see in Tempe or Gilbert. We have six huge trees with a top-of-the-line irrigation system put in. And today, I noticed that there was probably five huge dump truck loads of topsoil being spread. That's going to grow some really primo grass. For the little bit of manpower you've got left there doing great, thank them.
Yeah, we're actually going to devote the rest of the week in Monday from that, and then we're going to have to pull off and go back and prep. So the workforce is really great at being flexible, going from job to the next.
Thank you, Jerry, very much.
Liz, there?
No, I think we're good. Thank you very much, Jerry.
How's that, Paul, for a short presentation?
Five minutes, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, but I did put my makeup on, like Michelle did.
And we like Marsha's Easter tree behind you, by the way.
Well, that's my egg tree.
That's gorgeous, you did well.
Jerry, thank you so much for...
I learned it the last time.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Next, we go to Consent Calendar. In matters listed on the Consent Calendar, considered to be routine and being acted by one motion and one vote, public hearing items are designated with an asterisk prior to consideration of consent agenda. The mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and their staff may remove any item for separate consideration. Item A, Consideration of Waiver of Section 2-4-10 Prior Discussion Rule to Allow Action on the Balance of the Consent Agenda. One, December 3, 2019, Council Meeting Minutes. Do we have anybody wanting any, or that removed? One item.
Second.
We have a motion of second for acceptance of Consent Calendar. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Next, we have New Business. An item A is Discussion and Consideration of Directing the Recruitment of Possible Appointment of Five Individuals to Serve as Members of the Board of Adjustments in Lieu of City Council Members per City of Globe Code Section 14-2-3B. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I believe we have a request to go into E-session on this. And so I'd like to ask that we adjust the agenda, you can table for now, and then we can take care of the action item, and then we can go into E-session, and then come back and see what council's pleasure is on this item. So, Shelley, correct me if I'm wrong, we need a motion second to table, and then as long as we make it in the E-session by, we have Bill available till 8:30?
No, we have, no. Bill is not available from 7:30.
Oh, he's not available. Oh, because then, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I would recommend that we table this, and we'll bring it back. Because I don't think we're going to catch, he's in Taylor, he's on the phone from 7:30 to 8:30. So I would just say that let's just table it, and we'll bring it back on the 14th. Yeah, yeah, that's just easier.
So motion to table?
We have motion of second to table this item. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. We'll go to Action Items. Consideration of Possible Brutal to Purchase One Ford F-150 in the Amount of $29,244.49 from McSpadden Ford, and One Ford F-250 in the Amount of $35,580.71
Jeanie Troy is currently unavailable.
From Peoria Ford. And authorize the city manager to sign the bid request forms. Funds have been budgeted in multiple accounts. See fiscal impact portion of this staff report. Jeanie?
I'm texting her now. Hey, Jeanie, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Hey, Jeanie, how you doing? Looking good. We can hear you.
I'm good.
We can't see you. I don't know what to tell you. Are you listening to the meeting on the, if you, you turn off your feed, oh, there you are. Yes, and make sure you turn down the sound on the YouTube if you're watching us on YouTube, because it'll throw you off by 18 seconds.
Is that her playing the guitar in the background?
No, that's Janice Joplin. There you go. You gotta...
No, you can't see Janice.
Yes, we can, but... Oh, is that not Janice, that's on the other side? Oh, okay. So do you want to talk to us about the, you're up for your agenda item on the purchase of the vehicles?
You can't see me?
No, we can't see you now. Do you turn down the sound on the, or just turn off the YouTube feed if that's throwing you off? Are you... Are you, okay.
Sound down, then I can't hear you guys, right?
No, okay, so leave your sound up, but click out, close out the YouTube video, or the YouTube feed, but leave your sound up so you can hear us talking. So turn the sound up, but then exit out of, exit out of the meeting, or, I'm sorry, exit out of the YouTube feed. Because we can hear you.
Okay, can you still hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
You guys anymore, but, okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the March 24, 2020, regular council meeting, staff received direction from council to issue a bid request for the purchase of one Ford F-150 truck and one Ford F-250 truck. Staff prepared a bid request on March 25th and sent it to the city attorney with approval of its form prior to proceeding it. The approval was received from the attorney on March 26th, and the bid request was emailed to eight Ford dealerships on that date, with the bid due time and date of 12:00 PM on June, attached to the staff report. And I received response back, bid back for five of the dealerships. The low bidder for the Ford F-150 was McSpadden Ford, at a price of $29,244.49. And the low bidder for the Ford F-250, Peoria Ford, at a price of $35,587.1. Funds have been budgeted for these two trucks, and that breakdown is in the fiscal impact part of your staff report.
Questions for Jeanie or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Ready?
Jeanie, I just want to commend you, and Paul, I'm sure you had something to do with this, but just finding ways how to finance these things without dipping into our purse and going into budgeted items and shifting dollars and limiting some things to make some things happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the bids and purchase?
Second.
We have a motion accept, and a second to accept the bids and purchase of vehicles?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, just real quick, I did lay in front of you a new policy. We'll bring this back in another meeting also, but that was a request from council. And that's the starting point of that. We'll have time to look at this at another date, but I just want to let you know that's our draft. So just finalize that before you go to the vote.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, if you do have a question, we can do that.
So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, the...
Thank you, Jeanie.
Thank you, Jeanie. The vote was just to buy the trucks, it wasn't in reference to this. It just was, just as a handout, so you knew where we're going. This will be for discussion later. At another meeting.
We'll have no executive session today, then.
Right, and so, wasn't expecting executive session. When we did the special meeting, Bill had said that he should be available, but he got, he didn't have this, there was a city of Taylor had a phone call scheduled to have him appear there. And so Bill has been pulled in a lot of directions, as many of the attorneys. And so it's, you know, the, we would like to have gotten the timing on this right, but we'll just put it back to the 14th, the meeting on the 14th. So, no problem there.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion second for adjournment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. I tried, I tried, but didn't.